Good evening and welcome to the regular session of the Crescent City City Council Open Session Meeting for June 20th, 2011, Monday. And Madam Clerk, would you pull the roll, or call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ania.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Shalung.
Here.
And Mayor Slert.
And I'm here, thank you. And so the record will reflect that councilperson Westfall is not with us due to illness.
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you. And Mr. Black, you're going to be wearing two hats tonight, Acting City Manager and City Attorney. Welcome, and thanks for your leadership. And that's in pitching in and helping out since Janine has a well-deserved day off. So, thank you for stepping in there. And I'd like to welcome my colleague, Ms. Murray, back. And Mr. Black, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Right. Ms. Murray, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to very common for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everybody here in the audience tonight, and those that might be live-streaming. And I understand that Channel 4 is back online, with the replay on television for the City Council meetings and the Board of Supervisors. So, glad to report that that's up and working again. This evening, we have no acknowledgements, so we'll move to the consent calendar. And there's three items. You have approval of the regular meeting minutes for June 6, 2011, of the Crescent City Council meeting. Item four is approval of warrant claims list for the period June 7 through June 20, 2011. And then item five, approval of bi-weekly payroll reports for the period ending June 4, 2011, date on June 10, 2011.
I would like to remove the regular meeting minutes from the consent calendar and approve items four and five at this time.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries unanimous, four to nothing. And that's removing the regular meeting minutes, item three.
Correct. And we can work with staff on some additions to the minutes and then adopt them at our next meeting, if the council's fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move to item six, which is, we're going to adjourn to the Crescent City Housing Authority. And Madam Clerk, would you have the record reflect that the Chair and the Directors are present?
Yes, sir.
And is there any public comment regarding the Crescent City Housing Authority tonight at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment. And we'll move to the consent calendar. We have two items. Approve the regular meeting minutes of May 3, 2010, of the Crescent City Housing Authority. And then item two, approve the warrant claims list for period of May 4, 2010 to June 20, 2011.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries unanimously, four to nothing. And we have no Housing Director's Report this evening. We have no public hearing, no continuing business. And then under new business, item three, we have a revision of administrative plan to implement the residency preference. And Megan.
So what we are proposing to do here is to amend our admin policy to include the implementation of a local preference. Preference is a term used by HUD. It basically means that any applicants qualifying for the preference are going to have a shorter wait time on the waiting list over applicants who do not qualify for the preference. The preference in this case would be Delnart County residents. So, out-of-county applicants would still be welcome to apply on our waiting list. They're just going to have a longer wait over the local people. And basically, how it would work is, with the application, there would be an explanation of the preference, and the applicants will have the opportunity to either claim the preference or not claim the preference. And they'll be placed on the waiting list based on the information that they provide. At the time that they reach the top of the waiting list, we would verify that they actually qualified for those preferences, that they were living in Delnart County or working in Delnart County, either the head of household or the spouse. And the reason that we are kind of going down this road is we are moving toward the goal of putting our application online. We think that if we can put the application online, it will benefit all parties involved. The application will be more accessible to our clientele that have difficulty coming to the application session. We have people who work during that time, or they don't have a vehicle, or they're disabled, so it makes attending the application session difficult for them. So that would take care of that problem. Additionally, it would save the Housing Authority some money and some staff time. The reason that we haven't completed this cycle before is because the one thing holding us back from putting it online was, we know that once we do that, we're going to get hit with a surge of out-of-county applications. And where that becomes a problem is, we've kind of seen this rising trend over the last few years of people who are kind of circumventing our waiting list because it's so short. One to two years seems like a long time to people here, but actually, most wait lists, particularly in California, are between five and 10 years long. So, word of mouth has kind of gotten around, we've been identified as this area with a phenomenally short wait list. They come, they sign up on our waiting list, they wait for a year or so, they get the voucher, they live here for a year because that's required, and then they transfer back to wherever they really, truly wanted to live. And if that area is not, does not have the available funds to bring that person onto their program, they turn around and bill Crescent City. So, for example, if we have someone living here in Crescent City, it's costing the Crescent City Housing Authority approximately $400 a month to administer that voucher. That person turns around and transfers down to San Francisco, and San Francisco says, "Hey, we don't have the funds, we can't bring you on, we're going to bill Crescent City." Well, that voucher is now costing the Crescent City Housing Authority $1,200 a month to administer because San Francisco is a significantly higher-cost area than Crescent City. So...
They actually use our funds while they are living in San Francisco?
Yes.
I had no idea.
Yeah. And so that $1,200, now that we could be using to house three families in Crescent City, we are paying to house one person in San Francisco. And additionally, the money that's really designated for this community is being funneled into an entirely different community. And that $1,200 isn't going to our local landlords, it's going to some landlords in San Francisco. And we can't deny these requests because it's a federal program, and this is a right that they have to go from one area to another. So, I think what's happened is, it's just too easy for people. One year on the wait list and a one-year living in Crescent City is pretty doable for most people. I think if we had a longer wait time associated with that for the non-local people, I think that might deter some of the people that are looking at it from that angle. I don't know that for sure because we haven't tried it, but I think that, to me, three to four years seems a much bigger commitment. It's a, you know, there's a lot of circumstances that can change in three to four years that don't necessarily deter people with a one-to-two-year time span. So that's, you know, that's what we're looking at and why we're looking at doing it. Additionally, I probably should add that this change would not impact anyone who's on our current waiting list. What we would do is basically create a separate waiting list for everyone who applies after the implementation of the local preference. And that way, nobody on the current waiting list is being disadvantaged by this change.
That sounds good. The only question I had when I read through this is, what is the length of time that determines whether or not they're local?
It's the time that we do the verification. So, if...
For instance, like if I go to Oregon to go to college, I have to show that I've lived in the state for, like, I think, a minimum of six months.
No, you don't, you won't have to. It will only, and this is actually, that's a good question, because that was one of the things we looked at when we were first setting this up. And I looked into it, and the regulations do limit us there. They say that at the time of the verification, so when they come to the top of the waiting list, when they're pulled off the waitlist, that's the time that the residency is verified. So technically, they could live somewhere else while they're on the waiting list. They wouldn't have claimed the preference, so...
How do you know that, if you don't know where they live?
Well, all we are looking at is whether they have that proof of that residency at the time that we pull them off the waiting list. So, it doesn't really even matter where they were living the whole time they were on the waiting list. It's whether they have a domicile in Delnart County at the time that they are pulled off the top of the waiting list and about to issue or receive a voucher. So if they can't prove it at that time, when they, when they come to the top, they can't say, "Well, here's a paycheck stub from today that shows I'm working at Safeway in Crescent City," then we would say, you know, "Sorry, if you can't prove that as of today, you're going to go back on the waiting list with a non-preferred status." And they don't, they don't go backwards, though. So there is really no minimum time commitment from the point that they're pulled off the waitlist.
Well, it sounds like it's a small improvement, but it also sounds like there's some flaws in the entire program.
Yeah. It's hard, especially...
Do you ever have the opportunity to deal with that on a federal level with legislation?
Well, we have, you know, reached, a lot of other housing authorities that are in our position complain about it. Because for other housing authorities like San Francisco, it's not a problem because everywhere else is cheaper. So, it's costing them less, you know, if someone from San Francisco moves here, they don't mind paying $400 a month because they're saving the balance of what they would be paying for that person in San Francisco. We are on the opposite spectrum. So, most places, particularly in California, which is where we see most of our people transfer to, most of our transfer requests, most areas are more expensive than Crescent City. So, we have a lot of people, too, from the Bay Area. That seems to be the big area where, because they can get here in a day. They can, it's not like it's, you know, a, it's not like it's at the bottom of the state all the way to the top. It's an eight-hour drive. So, it makes the move to Crescent City for a year much easier. So...
Do you ever track whether or not people that are moving here and applying for HUD funding are moving here for family at the prison?
We haven't really seen too much of that. I don't know, I mean, I don't know how we would, we would know whether or not, unless someone in the family was actually an employee, I don't know how, how we would know that.
Well, it sounds like a correct response for a condition that's been identified that at least will help it on some level.
Right. We hope so.
Very good. Any other questions from the council?
Sure. I wanted to note, approximately how many out-of-town, out-of-county residents do we have currently on our waitlist? Do you track that right now?
I don't know how many are on the waiting list, but I know that right now, we have 10 people that are in this situation where they are living elsewhere, and those housing authorities are billing us. And for those 10 people, our monthly cost is about $5,000. Where our regular people within this county, it's about $400 a month. So, right there, it's, you know, an extra $100 a month per family.
And then, how do you evaluate applicants that are homeless?
The homeless applicants, we put something in there, because we did think about that. They're going to have, obviously, a harder time proving whether or not they're, they're a resident. So, we figured that for those people, they could go to...
And you say they have to prove they're getting services?
Yes. Yeah. Or if they could, I mean, there's, we left an open, kind of an open-ended one in there saying anything that's verification, that's deemed acceptable by management. So, I think that's going to mostly apply to people that are in that situation. If they've, you know, registered with a food bank, or if they've, you know, received services even from a local church, or any of those things, we would consider as approved.
All right. And then, in your comment or your policy for that the applicants that are determined that are ineligible, do you have a timeline when you send out those letters? Because there's nothing in the policy right now.
Well, how we're, how we're envisioning it is, when they come to the top for that appointment where we verify the qualifications, they would probably be notified, I would guess, within, I don't know, probably a week. We can put that in there.
I recommend that, so that we, so that they'll know.
Sure.
So, and then we have that policy in place, so we have a timeline for internal controls as well.
Sure. Okay. Certainly.
Any other questions?
Do you need action on this, or are you just letting us know?
Um, no, we do need you to approve it.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve the, let's see how she, how you worded it. The revision of the administrative plan to implement a local residency preference.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment. Pull that vote?
I would.
Please.
Hi, Tim Hoon, I'm a county resident. And I have not been to a Housing Authority meeting since Susie Mendez was Director. Now I gather, are you Megan Miller? And I thought, who could follow up Susie Mendez? Because, you know, she was great. But, nice job on figuring out this out-of-the-area thing and saving up some money. So, bravo. Way to go.
Thank you, Tim.
Would you like me to pull the vote now?
Please.
Okay. Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. So the motion carries unanimously, four to nothing.
Good work.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Great job. Okay, so we will adjourn the Crescent City Housing Authority to the next regular scheduled meeting, July 18, 2011, at 6:00 PM. And we will now convene as the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency. And Madam Clerk, would you have the record reflect that the Chair and the Directors are present?
Yes, sir.
And is there any public comment this evening regarding the Redevelopment Agency? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment. And we have a consent calendar. First item is approval of the regular meeting minutes, May 16, 2011, of Crescent City Redevelopment Agency. And item two, approve the warrant claims list of May 17, 2011, to June 20, 2011.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So the motion carries unanimously, again, four to nothing. And then Executive Directors' Report, we have none. And Business Items, we have none. Public Hearing, none. New Business, none. And so we will adjourn...
I have a comment as a Director.
Please.
And I would just like to, just let the public know that the State Assembly and Senate both passed by majority eliminating redevelopment agencies in the state of California. Chris McKenzie, who is our, the Executive Director for the California League of Cities, is working very closely with council on filing a lawsuit against the state for doing so. However, this is as close as it's gotten, and it could be devastating for California and small cities across the state. I spoke with Mary Creasy, who is our Redwood Empire contact. Over the weekend, she was keeping me very clo, very close to the vote. And Charles and I both reached out to Senator Lamalfa and also to Assemblyman Chesbro to let them know. I would, I'm happy to report that Mr. Lamalfa voted no on the issue, so that he's in support of keeping our RDAs alive. And that's coming a long way because when I first met him, he was supportive of eliminating RDAs for budgetary purposes. So, when I sent him the email and thanked him, he said that he had, said, "I had Mayor Kelly in mind when I made that vote because I had worked on him for about three months to help him understand how important it is to our community." On the other hand, Mr. Chesbro voted to, along with Noreen Evans from the Assembly, to eliminate RDAs. So that has, is moving forward as we speak, and it could be, it could have a big impact on our city if the lawsuit doesn't succeed. And we all know how lawsuits go. So I just wanted to let you know that speaking out to our representatives really is important.
It is.
I have a couple of comments, too.
Please.
Along with Councilmember Shalung's talk there. I was in Sacramento last Wednesday to attend a Public Safety Committee meeting, which I'm on for the league. And I had the time, and I went to Assemblyman Chesbro's office, and also State Senator Lamalfa's office, and personally asked their staff for them to vote, to have them vote no, because it's devastating for Crescent City. Mr. Chesbro chose to vote to get rid of RDA. And Mr. Lamalfa, like Kelly said, chose to vote no, which was very good. And it's interesting because I don't know why Mr. Chesbro voted to get rid of RDA. He's been up here several times and has seen the work of our Redevelopment Agency. And we follow right along the guidelines in redevelopment, and have for many, many years. And, but he still chose to vote to get rid of it. Also, they're doing some redistricting right now, and we may follow into another Assembly District and another State Senator District, Senatorial District. And if we go into another Assembly District, it'll be Mrs. Evans, who also voted to get rid of RDA. So, it's a big problem, and our legislators don't seem to be, some of our legislators don't be seen to listen to us. And Crescent City is a prime example of how RDA works. And so hopefully, when the Governor vetoed the budget last week, he left intact getting rid of RDA. So RDA goes away on June 30, 10 more days unless the legislature reaches some type of other agreement.
Well, I think there'll be an injunction against the elimination of it until, you know, the lawsuit is played out. But the part that really is frustrating is that the California Redevelopment Association, for the past at least six months, worked with the legislature and the Governor and presented a proposal that outlined a lot of redevelopment reform, which is probably needed. I know that there are some big projects down south, like big golf courses, that happen to be built with RDA monies that, you know, benefited developers and all kinds of stuff. And I think that those kinds of things do need to have reform, but where we're using it to create jobs, it's a big difference. And so they had put together a proposal for, you know, for reform and more accountability for redevelopment agencies. And they, and I thought, everybody thought that that was, you know, what was going to move forward. And, and at voting time, it did not. So, very unfortunate.
Thank you for those reports and comments. Ms. Murray, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this time, we will adjourn the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency until the next regular meeting on July 18 at 6:00 PM. And we'll move to item number eight.
Actually, Mayor, I might mention at that juncture that the anticipation is we'll have a special RDA meeting on June 29, which will be prior to your next regular meeting. And the need will be, the need for that meeting arises because certain redevelopment actions need to be taken before June 30 for them to be valid. And there are some projects that have been under discussion for quite a while that need your final consideration.
Has there been a time decided, I'm sorry, for that meeting?
There's a, actually, Mr. Renfro is here, so he might go. There's a tri-agency meeting on the 29th. Do you anticipate that to be a lengthy meeting or relatively brief?
Generally, those meetings ask last approximately 11:00. I understand you would like to meet around 6:30. That should be quite good.
Okay, so we'll shoot for 6:30 on the 29th of June. Okay, so we'll shoot for 6:30 on, uh, 29th of June. Thanks for that report, Mr. Black. Okay, so at this time, uh, we will, uh, move to item eight, uh, which is a public hearing, and it's important to note, if you challenge the decision of the city council in court, you may be limited to raising only, uh, those issues, you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, or in written correspondence, uh, delivered to the city council at or prior to the public hearing. So, um, at this time, we will conduct a public hearing and/or, uh, consider adoption of the final budget for fiscal year 2011 slash 2012. And we have Mr. McDonald here, uh, I think in combination with Mr. Black. But maybe as just a, a quick recap, uh, for those, uh, that aren't familiar, um, I think we've actually come a long ways, uh, in the past month or so. Uh, we started this workshop, uh, budget process, and we had a roughly a $180,000 deficit when we started, to today what is, uh, suggested is a balanced budget. Uh, we've been able to, uh, maintain the general fund reserves, and, uh, we've been able to avoid layoffs. So I think those are, uh, major accomplishments, and I do want to acknowledge, um, all of the various departments in the city and the department heads, uh, all coming together and working in concert with, uh, Janine and, uh, Ken, and hammering out this budget that's before us tonight after a couple, three previous iterations. So I think we've made some good progress, um, and here we are. So, Mr. Black, would you like to offer any thoughts?
No, not, not really. Your, your acting city manager, interim city manager, has prepared a, a budget memo that I think summarizes, uh, uh, some of the key points, and you've had significant budget workshops leading up to this meeting. Uh, so I, I believe that you have probably a pretty good grasp of what the major issues are. Mr. McDonald, of course, is more intimately familiar with, uh, line by line, uh, of the budget itself, and so he's here with me to answer questions, uh, as your finance director.
So Ken, would, would you like to give a, a little overview in addition to what I offered that might help fill in the blanks or have?
My mic on?
Yeah.
I can kind of go over, you know, the overview, the underview. I mean, I, I have more of a chance of being redundant and repeating myself, but, um, you know, we went through, Janine and I went through the memo, and those kind of highlight most of the major changes. Um, the one, one key thing that we did have in here is, um, we do have, uh, the one position that was recently resigned from PD is unfilled. Um, we were gonna look at that in 90 days, and at that time, we'll find out about the grant funding also. And other than that, I think everything is pretty much in line with, with the council directives. I mean, some of them, you know, we need a rosier revenue projection before we can really achieve some of the objectives that we've really set out, but I think this is our best attempt to try and maximize those.
There, there's been some conversation, um, regarding the CHP, um, grant that, uh, we're proposing. I think it ends the end of this month.
Well, we've already completed the application for that, and we found out that they won't give us a notification of any award until September, so that was kind of gonna coincide with our, it just happened to, it wasn't on purpose, but, um, that's when we find out. We should find out conclusively whether we were getting it or not. There's a lot of, um, guessing and, and thought that it's gonna be competitive, but we don't really have any actual numbers to come back and say, yeah, they're turning people down, or, or they have enough funds to meet everybody's applications.
Mr. Ania, uh, had shared with me before the meeting this evening that he had come across some additional information that he might want to share at this time.
I, uh, I made contact today with the, with the, um, United States Department of Justice. That's the COPS grant and the CHP grant, and, and the person, um, uh, didn't call me back in time, but I, what I found on the internet, of course, is there's $200 million that's gonna be awarded across the country by September 30th, and that translates into about 3,000 jobs. So our chances, so our chances of getting one of those $3,000, or 3,000 jobs for the Crescent City Police Department is almost zero. I mean, New York City, Chicago, Miami, San Francisco, Los Angeles, they're applying for thousands of positions. And so our chances are gonna be very, very minimal, which means that our budget is not balanced as of tonight because that grant is in there. And September 30th, if we don't get it, then our budget is gonna be $70,000 or more in deficit, and that's just in 90 days. So I have some other suggestions when we get, after we finish with the comments.
Very good, thank you. Are there other comments or clarifications?
For the pool budget that's on page 18, we have a projected, um, uh, services, charges for services income of $5,000 less than last year, even though we are proposing promoting the pool even more, and I'm just wondering...
Make sure your mic's on.
It's, it's on. I could barely hear you. So, okay, so on page 18, the pool budget, um, I'm just wondering, with the aggressive, uh, promotion of the pool that we're proposing with Matt and, and, um, him working more to bring in more revenue, why we have $5,000 less projected for this year?
I think there was, I can't remember if it's the swim team or, or what, but there was a group that was a large user of the pool that was, um, cutting back on their usage, and so that's, that's what that was reflected on. We're, I think it's still, um, an achievable number, but it, it's not overly optimistic and overly aggressive, so I think it's a fair, comfortable, I think they were thinking of dropping it down 10,000, and with the efforts, I think they moved it back up, and, you know, I kind of stand as the pessimistic realist to make sure, and I, I think it's...
I do, I hear about that. And then, um, for the interest income that we have on page 19, we had, uh, the last couple of years, only $1,000 in interest income, whereas in 2008 or 09, we had 30,000 something?
Yeah, and that's, that's a direct reflection of the earnings in the market. I mean, right now, our investment earnings in labor about .4 percent, it's not even a half a percent annually. When I got here three years ago, I think it was over four and a half percent.
Okay.
Most of the earnings that you are gonna be able to get are gonna take a six, 12, or 24-month period.
Okay.
Are there other questions offhand?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank our staff. Um, I thoroughly and completely appreciate everybody working, uh, together to make cuts clear across the board, um, and everybody did make cuts. Um, I think that in my five years on the council, this is the first time that I've had a budget in front of me that I'm, uh, confident in, that's completely balanced, and that keeps our, uh, 25 percent policy that the council established previously, um, in reserves. Um, and so I'm extremely happy about that. I know that it's a budget, things can change. I hope that within 90 days, we can, you know, be more, uh, secure with our COPS funding and replace that, uh, position, and give a little money back to those that have cut their budgets extremely. But, um, the fact that we have been able to keep our employees, and, uh, this council considered, uh, making a lot of, we had, you know, a lot of creative, uh, ideas on the table on how to cut expenses, um, and so we were able to keep our employees employed and not reduce their wages at this time, wages and benefits. Um, I think that says a lot for our staff and this council, because across the state, that's not happening, and I really hope that the employees appreciate that, um, because I know that I do, and I appreciate all the work that you guys have put into this budget, so thank you.
Very good, thank you.
I have some more comments.
Sure.
I was, uh, in reading, uh, Janine's, um, memorandum to us, caught my attention where she had met with the police chief and the lieutenant, Scott, since our last meeting, about the staffing levels. And it says, uh, "The police department agreed to delay in hiring, it, while it would be difficult, it could be accomplished." Well, things have changed since then. We now not only have a vacancy that we're not filling for at least 90 days, we now have an officer that's gonna be on light duty for the next 10 months, which puts us down two people immediately right now. And for the summer, we will be using the school resource officer, which is normally done. That position usually covers vacation. Officers are still gonna want vacations, so we're gonna have lots of overtime, which is gonna go over our overtime budget because this budget reduces it by $20,000 to $50,000, and you also have officers tired of having to be ordered to work overtime on their days off, because we cannot meet that, that schedule cannot be met now. And if we do not get that grant in 90 days, then we will be three officers down out of eight officers for patrol. It's a massive problem. I would suggest again that, well, and also, I checked with College of the Redwoods. Their next police academy starts July 11th, so it'd be, there'd be no way that we could s, hire somebody by then. The next police academy was scheduled for January, uh, this coming year, however, College of the Redwoods canceled that due to budget limitations. Their next one is scheduled for a year from this July. Now, there are 32 students starting the police academy this July 11th in a few weeks, and some of them do not have departments that have hired them yet, but that academy doesn't finish until December at the end of this year. I would again strongly suggest we immediately offer, open that position. It's gonna take 90 days to hire someone. There's background checks, there's medical checks. It's gonna take at least two months to do that, or maybe longer. And also, I once again, uh, wanna say that we probab, one of the places we can borrow that money from is from Shoreline. As I understand it, Ken, there's $90,000 in the reserve funds there. Is that correct?
I think it was, it was estimated to start the year at 85,000. Check real quick. Yeah, 85,000 was it, it started the year at?
There is 85...
I'm pretty confident we'll, we'll end the year with, with more than that, because we had budgeted for a lot of projects that we didn't do this year.
Okay.
In, in particular, I know the other day I was looking, we had budgeted 50,000 for materials supplies out there, and I think we've only spent about 4,000 so far.
And how much is that dredging gonna cost if we, if we, if that goes through and we want some of that dredge material for the, for the shoreline? It's free, right, and except...
The actual spoils material would be free, uh, to us. There may be some cost in hauling it over here, which would probably be minimal, but it's, it would save us probably over $100,000 in, uh, the project that needs to be done at Shoreline RV Park. And Shoreline RV Park is a moneymaker for the city, and right now, it's, you know, not very good, because it's not in very good shape. So the reason the, the thought process behind keeping that 50,000 dollars in there was to be able to have the money to make that project work if we get those dredge spoils for free. Otherwise, you know, what, what might cost us 50 would in the future cost us 150 to 200,000 dollars to improve that park. And so that was the...
Well, we have 85,000 dollars in there now, and within 90 days, if our budget picture looks better, we can replace that money. I'm willing to, I'm, I'm not willing to gamble on delaying hiring a police officer when we can start the process now. Public protection is supposed to be our number one, our number one, um, priority, or a very high priority. The other thing is, I was looking at the last two or three years, 50,000 dollars of revenue from the, 50 dollars in a year revenues from Shoreline went into our general fund. When I was on the council four or five years ago, and we went to controlling of the shoreline ourselves, we were gonna put it all back in the park, and that's been delayed three years. And I, I didn't know that we were taking money from Shoreline and shoring up our general fund, because when we voted after that lease was up, the council directed at that time that we were gonna manage the park, and any revenues that we got over our costs, we were gonna fix it up. And we started to do that, and I didn't know that this money's been taken out. I don't know if it's been three years or two years.
The, we had this very discussion during the budget session, so I'm sorry that you didn't hear that part, but, uh, we have made quite a few improvements at the park, and Eric Taylor has worked very hard at making those improvements. The, that sit, that park is leaps and bounds above what it was, um, two years ago, and, uh, the, I think it was last year, we decided to put 50,000 dollars of the money that it had generated into the general fund. So...
What was the reason for that?
I don't, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna shoot off a bunch of, of information I'm not sure of.
I think it was designated as repairs and improvements.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, last, last year in 910 was the first year that we had done that.
Okay.
And it was a, a method of balancing the general fund and getting additional revenue.
Okay.
I'd like to know, uh, hear from our staff if, um, they expect the, the, uh, work, uh, that's proposed to move forward necessarily in 90 days.
At the Shoreline?
Right.
That would be Eric and Eric.
Yeah, 'cause I think it's, it's basically been used as when we finish other priorities, we'll send staff over there, so it hasn't really been a top priority where staff has been assigned. I mean, we have some of the materials bought that we wanna put in there that, you know, we haven't had the time available to do that, so I think it's been a, a filler for them in between other projects.
I mean, do we necessarily think that we're gonna get, uh, uh, spoils available to us in 90 days?
I think they were working, I'd heard some information.
If it's actually approved, if those, if the dredge spoils are actually not, um...
Contaminated.
Contaminated, thank you. Um, we could probably get it within weeks.
Yeah, the la, last word I heard was that it's looking good, that they're, told, they'll pass that testing.
Is that true, Bob? Do you know?
I don't know how anyone would have a, I, I'm not sure about that, Eric, 'cause I don't know if anyone knows what the tests are gonna show, but the, the samples have been taken, and they've been at the lab for, I wanna say, at least two to three weeks. So what is looking good is that we're gonna know within another week or two what the lab results are.
Well, I think that the, uh, Mr. Young's updated the newspaper stated that they would know by the end of June.
Yeah, so... And also the dredging, I thought Mr. Young said couldn't start until August 22nd.
The, um...
To get the permit.
That's a, a whole different dredging. The, the stuff that's in the spoils area is federal channel outside the boat basin.
This is inside the boat basin?
Well, the inside the boat basin is the August 22nd date.
Okay.
The stuff that's in the spoils area now came from outside the boat basin from the federal channel. So it is two different sources.
When would they start dredging then if, if...
22nd, well...
August 22nd.
The, the target now is to start dredging August 22nd.
Okay.
And that's a whole separate set of tests. Those samples have also been taken, but much more recently.
But the, but the spoils that we're talking about receiving...
Yeah.
Are not the ones that would be dredged on August 22nd.
No, not at all, no. Those are already piled up.
Available now.
Yes, those are available now. That is correct.
And what would that cost be, minimal? Cause I've been hearing...
Well, Rich, uh, as you know, the spoils area is very close to the RV park. And so I'm not, I, I have no clue how to estimate that transport cost, but it's just a matter of transporting it.
Oh, there you go.
Two blocks.
It is zero, because we're gonna have 80 guys...
Talk to the microphone.
I know what the cost of, is, of transporting those materials. It, it's zero to the city, because we're gonna have 80 guys and gals with 40 wheelbarrows walking them over the 300 feet to Shoreline RV Park. Eric Weir actually came up with this great idea. If, if this, uh... I know, no, this is part of the National Emergency Grant, putting all these people to work. This would be the best project ever. If we could transfer those spoils, use only the labor of this... If we could transfer those spoils, use only the labor that's provided to, you know, this would be wonderful. So, anyway, the cost actually is...
Who's going to buy the forty wheelbarrows?
Oh, we got that covered.
So, we have eighty-five thousand dollars in there that we don't have to use right now. We could use for a police officer that we wouldn't even start spending until...
No.
That's not realistic, though. There would be some trucking costs involved. I mean, I don't doubt that Weir came up with that plan.
(laughing).
But it can be quite expensive, actually, if you talk about trucking materials.
Well, I don't, I don't know quite about the wheelbarrows and the bucket brigade or exactly how we'd get it to Shoreline, but I know that the harbor does need to get rid of that material. And so, if it's not disposed of at Shoreline RV and used as fill, then the trucking costs would be much more to the harbor. So, I'm sure that there will be some sort of an agreement between the city and the harbor, or a deal worked out where that material could be displaced at Shoreline. The true cost, though, and the labor grant will help out, definitely. You know, we can use that labor to do a lot of the improvements that we're talking about at Shoreline RV, but a lot of the cost will be in buying the pipe and different storm drain materials and other improvements that we're going to need at Shoreline. So, there will be some cost for materials there.
But, again, we don't know if the harbor is going to move that material or not.
Yeah, and as Bob said, that it really depends on how the tests come back and what that material will, what that material can be used for.
And we're going to evaluate the budget again in ninety days, and we would know by then how much money we were spending on Shoreline, I suspect, for the summer's improvements. We're close to it.
Yeah. I would think that if the harbor knows in two weeks, we're going to be able to, and it's successful, we're going to be able to move forward and get this done this summer.
I think the issue, though, that you need to wrestle with is that just moving and spreading dirt at the RV park is not the extent of improvements that needs to be done. In other words...
Right.
That's laying a base, literally speaking. And on top of that, you need to have electric, you need to have plumbing, you need to have some paving, grading, you know, at least rocking, rocking of roads, so...
Yeah, we really won't know till later this fall when we actually sit down and really plan out the overall plan of what we're going to do out there at the park.
So, I guess, I'm concerned when I hear Rich mention that we have an officer now on ten months of light duty.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's a personnel issue that this council's not aware of.
But there's nobody working, that means somebody has to work overtime for that person on the street because that's two people that we're short. And we're using our school resource officer this summer, but when school starts in September, I think it's realistic to say we might not have a school resource officer used that might have to be used for foot patrol, for street patrol.
And I guess I'm very concerned about the reality of the CHP grant actually happening. So, I guess if I could ask Chief to join us and give us his take on the CHP grant.
And well, I was just going to say, well, I was talking about us evaluating the budget in ninety days because we would have a better handle on if we'd gotten that grant and if we had wiggle room with any of the rest of our budget to keep a police officer on the force. And we will be using the school officer during the summer, so that would kind of give us the coverage, is what I'm thinking. So, we may be able to make some more intelligent adjustments to the budget in support of another police officer after the ninety days.
That's exactly the conversation we've had in the past.
Yeah, I agree with it, and we'll also know if the state is going to be...
Right, but I think...
Paying our booking fees as well.
But I think Rich has raised a couple issues here that has a direct impact. One is the issue of there's a new hiring of a police officer, and it's July eleventh is the next...
Academy.
Academy, and then there's nothing for a year. So, that seems very problematic. And then, I mean, we had a very serious community situation in law enforcement this past week that I think had a major impact on the entire community from what I've heard. And the notion, or the idea that we might be down three officers is very concerning because what else could happen also in the future that we have no control over?
Why three?
Well, we have one vacancy now that we're not filling.
Right.
One person is gone for at least ten months, and if we don't get the grant, that's the third officer that we're down out of eight.
That's right.
Three out of eight. Because we have to come up with seventy thousand plus dollars that we don't have. It's currently in the budget, but if we don't get that grant, it's not in the budget.
Right. So, I guess the point that I'd like to make before the Chief responds is, in the information that was provided in the staff report, at that point in time, he indicated that he felt that he could get by losing an additional officer, but I think what I'm hearing is things have changed, so I'm interested in hearing your thoughts now.
Well, definitely, things have changed, and they have changed for the worse. There's no doubt about it for all the reasons of what the council has been speaking about. There are a few more that's going to be coming down the pike as well, but still, I think in ninety days, you're going to be able to assess a little bit better exactly where we would stand as far as the police department is concerned. We can still go ahead and start a hiring process, if you want to do that, but not hire. We can have an eligibility list. There's not a problem with that as well. So, it's not a question of hiring people right away on that, and we can see what happens in ninety days. It's going to take well over ninety days to even start the process on that. It generally takes between four to six months to get an individual on board as far as doing backgrounds and medicals and psychs and everything else that's required as a full-time police officer. So, it is very frustrating to be in this situation, but still, we have to think overall the reasons that we're here, and that is, you know, the city is in a hundred and eighty thousand dollar deficit, and the police department is going to step up and do what needs to be done, at least at a very minimum of a temporary situation, but still make sure that the street is covered. And for this, this meeting today, I'm going to tell you that the street is covered with officers. However, there are some things coming down, like I said, the pike, that do concern me very much as far as personnel being available for on the street. So, the, as far as the CHP grant is concerned, just like Councilmember Ania said, it is a very competitive process. And those numbers are accurate from what I've heard on that, and our chances of obtaining that police officer position for Crescent City, California is certainly next to nothing. Surely, your interim, interim city manager knew that right off the get-go. So did, so did Mr. McDonald as well, and rightly so. And to bank on that, I don't think that would probably be the best way to go either, so...
What's, is there like, you guys said there's two hundred million dollars that's going to be granted?
Through the federal government.
Through the federal government? Is it significantly less than last year? Because we've, as long as I've been on the council, we've got that COPPS grant funding every year.
It's different funding.
It is, yes. It is a different funding. This is different. You still have the COPPS grant.
Oh, the CHP that...
The CHP is the Continuous Hiring Program Grant, which is different, that the community-oriented policing from the Department of Justice just put that out. So, we still have the other one of a hundred thousand dollars to come through.
So, Chief, are you concerned about with this new officer being down for ten months on light duty? Are you concerned about the potential for burnout with overtime?
I think the overtime is going to be a factor. I think that right now, the officers are becoming a little bit spent as far as being ordered. They are now being ordered into work, and that certainly does raise an issue as far as that's concerned, yes. You know, everybody is out on the street, including myself, but then other things are going to fall off onto the back burner, administrative duties, responsibilities, meetings, presentations, all the things that you're proud of your police department doing.
So...
I just spent some time in Coos County, my hometown of Bandon, and this is happening all over the place. We're not unique. Bandon has six officers, and Coos County has, I think they said, three that are on duty to cover the entire county.
Coos County?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and the Bandon PD has one officer on, and they rely on Coos County for backup. And the, I had one of them on each side of me, and he was saying, you know, he could be the north end of Bandon and have a situation, and the Coos County sheriff guy could be, you know, in Charleston and have, you know, a thirty-minute response time. So, it's happening everywhere.
Sure it is.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We're not unique in this, this situation. We certainly are not.
Well, I understand that, but I think what we're trying to do is assess the options available to us, and do we want to go there necessarily if we have other options?
You know, it's interesting, Chief, because the population of this town is four or five thousand in reality for the citizens, but being the only city in the county we serve, the police department serves, and the city serves twenty-six thousand people. The banks are here, the post office is here, the stores are, mostly all the stores are here. So, the police department serves twenty-six thousand people. And what's interesting about that, I went to the police department, and this is a public log. I picked a day, Thursday, last Thursday. There's five pages of police activity here. Let me read a few. There was a burglary of a residence reported on West Essex Street at one o'clock in the morning. There was a suspicious incident, somebody trying a lady's doorknob on Pacific Avenue, and that was at one-thirty in the morning. There was another suspicious avenue, another suspicious problem on Condor Street where the K-9 officer did extra foot patrol because the people were complaining about suspicious people. Then we go into our community housing, our, what's that called? CFMH?
Crime-free multi.
Crime-free, where the manager called and wanted some, some officer to come through because there's suspicious people. This goes on and on. There's traffic stops. Then there's a disturbance at seven-fifteen in the morning, this is Thursday morning, where this guy gets arrested for possession of a weapon, disturbing the peace, and he goes to jail. And there's five pages of police activity here, and this is probably close to a normal day. And so, there's a lot of activity going on here, and the, one, I'm going to say this one more time, and that's going to be hit for me. Our deficit's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars going into the budget. It's, we're supposedly balancing it on, one hundred and forty thousand of that money is coming from the police department. Two officers, one that we're not going to, that right now is vacant, that we're going to save money on, and if we don't get that grant, that's another seventy. So, one hundred and forty thousand dollars of the one hundred and seventy-nine deficit that we close is going to come from police officers, and I thought that that public safety was number one in our community, and if it's not going to be, then we need to have a council meeting and re-prioritize our priorities.
Well, and I tend to agree with you. And for me, it seems to me that there's, the money is there right now sitting on the table that we can borrow for ninety days to do the prudent thing regarding public safety, and we'll make the reassessments, and the likelihood is that some good things will happen on the TOTs and sales tax or whatever's coming in, and or whatever we hear from the state. I'm not banking on the CHP grant happening, and I think that'd be a crisis at that time. But to me, it sounds like there's money to move the spoils when we get the okay, and to start that whole process, and for ninety days, you're going to get some of the work done. I mean, I think I understood there's still a planning effort to be made. So, for me, buying ninety days right now out of the Shoreline Fund makes sense from a public safety standpoint, knowing now that we have an officer on light duty. And if we have some other variable, which is always possible, then that's a whole nother dilemma or issue.
Well, I have heard that our staff feels that everybody should be bearing the burden in this budget, and I think that they've done that. And I think that if we turn our backs on the opportunities that we have with Shoreline right now, we're, we're going to regret it. And I also know that, you know, it is a revenue source for us as well. I, I agree that public safety is, is a priority. I really do, always has been with me. Mr. Ania takes the balanced budget that we have right now and rewords it, saying that we are balancing it on the backs of the PD, and really, we're not. The PD is the majority of our expense for the city. And we have a officer that has resigned that we chose not to fill in this balanced budget. We do not know if we're going to get the CHP money, but we also don't know if we're going to get all the other revenues that we've projected. And so, I mean, the picture could get a lot worse, and I appreciate all the work that all of the staff has put into this budget.
Ken, I have a question for you. On our, our budget for the police department on page twelve, of the wages and salaries projected, is there overtime projected in that?
Yeah, I think, I think it's projected at fifty thousand, and I think the current year we're in right now, that's ending in a week and a half, I think that was seventy thousand.
At the prior workshops...
Seventy-five, seventy-seven thousand right now.
It was in the seventies and...
It was seventy thousand at the prior workshops when we started, and the Chief has come down twice...
Yeah, I think we...
To get to the fifty thousand, as I recall.
I just wanted to make sure that you understood that correctly.
Yeah, we asked that the overtime be brought down to fifty thousand dollars.
I understand that.
Yeah, it's fifty thousand.
So, I guess I'm troubled because I, my understanding is, is that the PD is at this point bearing the hundred and forty thousand of the hundred and eighty thousand dollar deficit directly. In addition to the prior reductions.
May I ask you a question? Doug, if the seventy thousand CHP grant doesn't come through, there's nothing about that that automatically causes you to lose an officer. That will be a council decision at that time, right?
Correct, because we still have the hundred thousand dollars come in, so this is an additional grant. That's, the CHP grant should bring another officer on here, so we wouldn't be losing another officer if we didn't get this...
Thank you.
This particular one, so...
We, we had to show in the application that we were looking at that as an option.
Correct.
You know, we were, but if the grant falls through, there, it takes our action to make anything happen after.
Right.
We just lose the seventy thousand in revenue that we budgeted.
The COPPS grant is on the vehicle license fee, correct?
The COPPS grant is.
That ends, that ends in ten days.
Right.
There was no proposal for a vehicle license fee in the legislature. They increase the registration for vehicles twelve dollars, which won't cover very many COPPS. So, the COPPS grant, as of ten days from now, is gone.
No.
Yes, it ends June thirtieth.
See, I was under the impression that the extension for the vehicle license fee was going to cover the booking costs.
Right.
And that's the thing that I think we put forty-five thousand in here.
That's correct.
Whether that's going to be adequate or not, but I think the, the COPS grant that we get a hundred thousand dollars, I think that's by federal delineation, so I don't think that's coming from any of the state funds.
That's right. I thought it was coming out of the...
Maybe, I don't know the portion. I know the majority of it.
A portion of the VLF funds does come out of that, I believe.
Yes, it does.
They are putting, from the last I've checked, is three hundred million dollars back into that from the five hundred million dollars they needed from that. So, there's two hundred million that's, that's outstanding, where it's going to have to come from something. So, and that's yet to be, you know...
And that's a federal?
Mm-hmm.
That's federal?
Yes.
Yeah, everything I've been trying to keep up in this crazy legislative session, it seemed like that was still fairly secure for small agencies, but, you know, they keep changing everything rapidly. It's hard to keep pace with all this.
We can't live on grants when it comes to police. We can't live on grants when it comes to police. They're nice to have, but you can't live on them.
And certainly, you don't wanna have.
So the $70,000 is additional money that we would receive, not money, I mean, and we haven't projected that we're gonna get it, but that doesn't mean you're gonna lose an officer.
Yeah, that's an additional grant. Now, where we're gonna lose it to compensate for that is the COPS grant that we normally get of the $100,000. That's where it would be, where we would lose it from. Not generally just the grant itself, the CHP grant.
And the COPS grant funding will no longer be, is that what you're saying?
Well, there's a possibility of that.
But there's a possibility that we'll get it?
I think in 90 days, you'll be able to see exactly where you stand a little bit better. Actually, I do know that I did get the draft from what the county's proposal on the booking fees, and it looks like it's less, a lot less than what we projected for as well, too. So it's like almost half than what we've been.
Oh, good.
So that helps.
Uh-huh.
Awesome.
So Chief, if it was your choice, can you sit for 90 days and not, or start a passive hiring process?
I think simultaneously, that if we can start maybe a hiring process of an eligibility list to be prepared, just in case we do go to that, that'd be fine, too, because we can also pull some reserves out of that as well. I think that with the school resource officer being out of the school for the summer, that's certainly gonna alleviate our issues on that, too. And also, I came up here two weeks ago to say, for us as a city, this needs to be done as far as the police department doing their fair share on the budget dilemma that we are in. But I think that for 90 days, sure, absolutely, I can do that. One thing I'd really like to emphasize, though, even though, regardless of how you vote on this or not, I really have a problem with the elimination of the position, more so than I am just freezing the position, so that we can assess it later on, because it's.
We haven't eliminated anything. We just said we weren't gonna fill the position for 90 days.
I'm just addressing the language of the memo, that's all.
In the position control, in the last two pages of the budget, it shows minus one position. So, you know, when we come back to evaluate, if we're gonna include it, it would basically be in that position control to show plus one. So.
Well, it would be.
By that in the budget, it is.
The officer that resigned, that position is frozen at this point, not lost, is the way I understand it.
Well, just by how we track it in the budget, as whether the position can be filled or not, so if he goes forward with an eligibility list, it won't be filling it until we take some council action, which would.
Correct.
If we did that without doing the evaluation, it would in effect do the same thing. So next budget that would come forward, it would say the plus one. It was more of a tool to evaluate where her wages are going. I don't use that for the financial end, I use a detailed listing to go through it, but.
So when someone's on light duty, do they learn, do they, excuse me, do they earn less money?
No, they don't. I don't really have a light duty policy. It's case by case on where we are on the department, of what we need to fill in at the time that that person may be on light duty.
Well, it sounds like because of recent things that have happened, that you should come up with a policy.
Well, I'm not saying light duty is not allowed, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that to make it as a blanket policy makes it, it makes it more difficult to manage the department by doing it that way.
And it seems to me that if they're put on light duty through no reason of their own personal responsibility, that's a penalty, and I don't like to see that happen to staff. I don't like to see them penalized because they're required to be put on light duty.
Penalized how?
By having a reduction in their wages.
Oh, I didn't say they should, I just asked if they do, I wasn't, because I didn't know.
It would be acceptable to me for the budget to go ahead, if we went ahead and advertised for that position.
Get an eligibility list.
Get an eligibility list, yes.
Okay.
Bob, what does that mean?
You're just establishing a list that, for people that you would consider hiring.
Yeah, that's all.
Lots of entities do it.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, I would guess that creating an eligibility list, that you have to go through background checks and applications and all of that.
I think we should ask Doug, because I'm not 100% sure what it means to recruit, basically, get an eligibility list.
I don't either.
Perhaps not be in a position to hire, I guess that would be the.
The county does it a lot, especially through merit systems for social workers. It's just, you apply with the understanding that you may be called back for an interview if your screen, your application is screened and you look like you're eligible.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't mean that you're going to get a job.
I would just think it would be different for a police officer position, though.
That's different, that's different because they have enough positions that they do continuous recruiting. So they're always recruiting, they're always hiring, you know. No, being on the list doesn't mean you're guaranteed a slot. And I'm not saying it's different with respect to a police officer, but we don't do continuous recruiting, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. And so, I don't know, Doug, why don't you tell them what you believe?
Well, the eligibility list would be a list that we would be able to go out and advertise, people start the hiring process, oral boards, written tests, physical agility test, and then after that, a list of names is submitted, you know, as far as that's concerned. And right there, we can look at the most promising individuals through the process that fared very well on it, and then we can go from there once, and that should be done within the 90 days.
And how much does that cost?
Well, it wouldn't, the advertisement in the paper, the advertisement in the paper, and then because we would stop just before the medical, the psychological, and the drug screen, so that wouldn't.
Wouldn't you advertise more than just in the newspaper? I mean, wouldn't you advertise, are there like law enforcement journals, or?
Yes, personnel does that, they do that. So it costs us about a couple hundred dollars for the advertisement, and then saying that this is for, to establish an eligibility list. And in order to establish that eligibility list, then the police department puts together the oral boards and with testing questions from personnel, and so it wouldn't cost us anything to do that, other than the personnel to sit on the board.
I think the bottom line is there's cost involved to recruit.
It would, it would allow us to be, regardless of the outcome of it, we don't know what's gonna happen in the future, so you want to be prepared, you don't want that extra three or four months that's gonna take to establish a list.
Right, I'm fine with that. I just didn't understand the process, I wanted to understand what it would cost. And also, just the definition of it, because I didn't know what that would mean to a potential employee if we put them through this whole process and then say, oh, sorry.
It wouldn't be the whole process, it would just be up to the point where the city would have to.
Yeah, that's why I asked for clarification, thank you.
So if we come back in 90 days and we've found the resources, and we can actually retain the new officer, how's that gonna work regarding the College of the Redwoods Academy?
Well, even though Councilmember Ania was absolutely correct, College of the Redwoods has eliminated one academy because of the economy the way that it is, don't forget, where an academy starts, an academy just ended. So even during my time down there, individuals down there at the academy have asked me if we are hiring. So it's not a question of, but you need to get it in that timeframe so that these cadets know that we are gonna be hiring, because some do leave the area.
Well, and not only that, cities across the state have laid off officers that are looking for jobs.
That's correct. That's why the advertisement does come in for that, as far as. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
Bill's not going to like this, but we're pinching pennies right now on item number 11 to do an increase for tri-agency of $1,500. I would like to pull that from the budget.
Is there a second?
Well, we should at least give him the opportunity to let us know how that will affect the tri-agency.
Bill?
Good evening, Bill, we're in for Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority. Later on in your agenda packet, you do have a budget for next year. And one of the things you might note is that the budget for 2011, 2012 is a little over $50,000 less than it was this year. So that's about a 27% budget cut, or reduction.
In revenue, you mean?
Right, in the total budget. Tri-Agency is only funded through contributions by the city and the county and the Harbor District. There is no other funding mechanism for me to bring money into the tri-agency. The funds on the revolving loan fund have to be reinvested back into the revolving loan fund, and tri-agency doesn't typically go after operating-type grants. So the only place that tri-agency can get additional money is to come to the three contributing entities.
Wouldn't this be towards your salary, though, Bill?
Well, it depends on which line item you look at, yeah. That's, the compensation for the executive director as an independent contractor hasn't changed in three years, so some of that would go towards it. It's not entirely all where it goes. You'll also notice some other things have gone up. Our audit costs have gone from $2,000 to $5,000. This is a result of bringing the audit up into Del Norte and away from Humboldt Area Foundation. We've.
You know, Bill, did you get a quote for that? I'm just curious, because the city only pays $13,000 for its audit, and it's much larger than yours.
I'm looking at options there right now, but at this point, actually, we just got the proposal from the current auditor, and his number is $7,500 for a tri-agency's audit, so.
Really?
Yeah. So expenses are going up across the board.
I would also offer that, I think Bill's been the point man out there for helping us secure new business here in our city and the community, and I think he's been instrumental in the Green Star Project, which is looking very hopeful. And that's what, that's the kind of action we need.
Sure, I understand that.
We've been reducing all the other funding for community support, and so I'm hard-pressed to increase one entity's.
Well, if I just sort of come straight across from last year's budget, I would have asked for $184,000 instead of $134,000.
Can I ask why EDC's cost has gone up to $10,000?
I'm sorry, which?
The EDC?
Their costs have gone up because they've assumed a lot of the functions that Humboldt Area Foundation formerly did, and the costs that we were paying Humboldt Area Foundation were around $14,000. We had budgeted $10,000 for them last year. So we're moving, basically, EDC is not only administering the revolving loan fund, which they used to charge us, I believe, $6,000 a year for, they're also assuming all the functions that we are paying Humboldt Area Foundation.
Which is just writing checks, basically?
Basically. So we're getting a better deal by using EDC, we're saving approximately $4,000 a year.
To me, the $1,500 is not the problem with the budget, we're talking about a $70,000 problem, or a $140,000 problem, or a $180,000 problem.
Well, we could always meet in the middle and do part of it, rather than none.
Thank you, Bill. Is there a public comment?
Public hearing.
We're opening the public hearing, please, Mr. Barrett.
My name is Jim Barrett, I live on Anzio Street in Crescent City, and I came because, primarily for two things, but one of them is this budget. You said in the newspaper quoted you, Mr. Mayor, as lamenting the fact that the public hadn't been taking part in the budget. You can easily see why, this is complicated, difficult stuff in a lot of ways, if you let it get too carried away. But I did want to say in defense of us and the public, that we feel like we're taking part in the budget when we come and argue in favor of this or that at the meetings throughout the year and the details. You just can't have too many people in these details. But to the degree you allow the public to comment, I would like to thank you, Mr. Ania, for being, for pushing this issue of security so strongly, but the public doesn't budget this way. You know, we don't try to discipline our kids with our, well, we don't generally try to discipline our kids with our checkbook, and we don't decide how we're gonna, you know, deal with somebody being sick based on our savings account. We just, you know, we deal with the budget the best we can, we deal with being sick the best we can, we deal with our kids the best we can. And now it's time for you to make a budget. And I think you'll help yourselves if you remember that's why you're here. There are lots of issues that you're not even capable of talking about with regard to security and our police department, and the 33,000 convicts that are gonna be dumped on us, and all the different issues that are at hand. You're not here to talk about that, you're here to talk about a budget. And it would be good if you just look at the fact you have a certain amount of money, you've got cooperative staff, this is an incredible city. I'm shocked that you guys do so well with so little money. Four million, five million general fund budget, this isn't a lot of money. This is jump change to most cities. You do really well. But now it's time, control your hysteria, deal with the fact you now have to make a budget. I would suggest you work with your staff, just try to go straight across the board, cut that money as you need to. I like the idea of funding your reserves, although I guess, you know, it sounds bad enough, maybe you're just never gonna do that. But don't be afraid to just draw your budget now and then address the other issues later. I mean, you do have a security problem here. I would, I hope to talk about it in the general public comment, but as far as your budget goes, thank you for doing this, but, okay, it's a yellow light. Thank you for doing this, but don't get confused. Just stay with your budget, do it the best you can, and deal with the other stuff when you have to.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Is there other public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. Mr. Hoon?
Tim Hoon, I would just encourage the city council to keep tri-agency in at the full level of funding because of the, I think you get great value for your dollar on that investment, on economic development for Crescent City and Del Norte County. And these are hard times, but it's not, it's not the time to cut back on that investment. And I think it's a small enough that it could hopefully, you know, squeak through and maybe bring in additional revenue for next year.
Thank you, Tim.
Just for the record, it's not, we're not, this is an increase to that budget, not a decrease. It wouldn't decrease the budget.
Sure, well, that's even better.
It would be an increase to what we already give them.
Then that's music to my ears, yeah.
And my point still is that we've reduced our funding for other community support, and so I am hard-pressed to support giving one entity even that minimal amount when we've reduced the other ones, who also generate income indirectly.
Okay, back to the council, questions? Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and is there a motion?
I would move to approve the budget as presented by staff for fiscal year 2011-12 with a review in 90 days, if not sooner, if the information becomes available.
Does that motion include starting an eligibility list for the police department?
Well, the budget doesn't direct that. I think the council can direct that, make that direction on its own, but because he's going to pay for the recruitment out of the budget that he has, it's not a motion within the budget, in my understanding. But I think that we all agreed that he could move forward with that.
With that, I'll second the motion.
Okay, I guess I would like to add that we institute a budget transfer request form to be used even in the next 90 days for any proposed budget alignment, and that should be throughout the year. And then I would also request that we establish a mid-year budget review for January 2012 and that we hold to it. This last year, we didn't do that. So, I think that's it. Those are two important issues to add.
I think I agree absolutely. If... and I think what Charles is saying, and I hope the staff hears it loud and clear, if your budget changes, you need to go through the budget transfer process, and there is a form that Mr. McDonald and the city manager will have you use.
Is that...
I recommend that you not include that as part of the budget motion. Do that as a separate item, as a follow-up.
Okay.
It was discussion. My motion did not include it.
Okay, so the motion in a second. Madam Clark, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
That's a yes, thank you. So, it's unanimous for to nothing?
And according to my records, the 90 days would be our September 19 meeting for budget review.
Very good.
According to the calendar, I should say.
Well, and I think if Ken gets more information before that, I mean, we could even act before that if we need to.
Right.
With our new form.
With your new form. Hopefully, it's a revenue form.
Revenue neutral.
So, is there a motion regarding the request form?
Sure, I will make that. Some of the recommendations made by the city manager through this budget process include... there's a list of 10 things that you can see in the staff report, but the two things that really stand out are number six, which is to utilize a budget transfer request form to maintain budget alignment throughout the fiscal year, and I don't think that's been done in the past. If a department head went over their budget in overtime because of a need, they just went over budget. Well, that's really not how you manage a budget. If you need more money than what this council has approved, then you have to come to the council and ask for it, and that has to be done through a budget transfer form. If you want to move line items around in your budget, if you want to take $1,000 from office supply as a move it to training, that's up to you and city manager as a department head.
No, I don't think that's correct. I think that that movement is exactly what has to come back to you.
I think the way that Janine and I talked about it was, anything within a department would be city manager, anything outside of the department, and in particular, outside the fund, if it's inter-fund.
I'm wrong.
Correct.
We were trying to keep it... before this had come into effect, what we had used when Rod was here is, if it was changing line items between materials and supplies, that we did internally.
Right.
But now we're saying we could take it out of contract services and move it to, say, employee support for training, like you're talking about.
Right.
I think that's what Janine was kind of envisioning, is within the same department, the city manager would handle anything outside of that she was going to bring.
If Jim talks to the city manager and says, hey, I planned on putting up, you know, 14 new stop signs this year, and they're not as bad as I thought, so I have this extra money for stop signs, so I'm going to use it to pave this street. That's between him and the city manager if it's a need and it's... but if it's, I need 14 new stop signs and I don't have it in the budget, and the city manager says, well, I have it in some other budget, and they want to move it, that's the transfer that needs to...
Nope.
That needs to come before this council, if you're going to change overall budget numbers, but if the city manager... that's the city manager's job to manage the internal.
You know, building on that, I serve on the RHS board, and we have a finance committee that meets monthly about the bills. What if we had a subcommittee of the council to meet monthly to go over those two things before it comes to the whole council? I'm willing to serve on that.
That makes sense.
I think if you had a standing committee, then you might have to agendize it because it's not just a temporary type thing.
And we've... and we've set internal controls, and Mr. Slert sees every invoice and every check that goes out of the city.
Well, that's fine.
And so, we do have oversight, I think.
Most of the time, any of the council or the public has questions on certain expenditures. You know, at a public meeting like this, when we don't have our research sources at our hands, it's sometimes hard, but during the day, if they call up, we can easily research that.
Okay. All right. I also see there number eight, though. It says to revisit the budget after the year in reconciliation. When is that?
Usually August, September.
Okay, so we're going to do that. All right.
So, there's a motion on the floor?
Which, I guess I didn't finish it, and to try to be better about our mid-year budget review in early 2012. January is what Mr. Slert suggested.
Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to adopt the recommendations set forth. I just went through 10 from our interim city manager, Janine Gallatiotto.
I just made a motion. Are you seconding it?
Jim made a motion of item number six, and then the issue of the mid-year review for January.
I didn't hear you say for all of them. I'm sorry, I'll second that.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Because we kind of got into discussion after I made the original motion.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, and Madam Clark, will you pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
Yes, so that passes for to nothing unanimous also. Thank you. Good job, colleagues. No pain, no gain. Okay, we'll move to reports at this time, and we'll receive a report from Terry from RHS regarding the $40,000 donation from Walmart.
Terry McUnosh, Executive Director of Rural Human Services. And I was really excited to see you got $5,000 more on the agenda. Thought maybe you had some extra money there. It does say it's $45,000. I'd just like to just read something that we've written up here. "The March 11, 2011 tsunami surge in Crescent City destroyed the Crescent City Harbor, resulting in millions of dollars in damage and over 275 workers unemployed or displaced. Approximately 220 fishermen, 40 dock workers, and 15 seafood processors were impacted. The harbor itself, all the docks, and many pilings were destroyed by the 8.5-foot wave. Other low-lying areas of the city and the county were damaged as well. Unfortunately, 20 miles south, one man on the Klamath River was swept out to sea, losing his life. In response to this disaster, several local businesses, organizations, and many individuals have donated money to assist the affected fishermen to help rebuild the harbor. Most recently, as many of you were in attendance this last week, Walmart had a donation of $40,000 to assist in recovery efforts. These funds will be used for $5,000 directly assisting fishermen whose boats sank or were damaged, $5,000 to help install moorings for the fishing fleet while the harbor itself is rebuilt. Many of you may know where those moorings are. They were right outside the big rock there and next to the chart room. And $30,000 Walmart would like to be used for materials for the National Emergency Grant crews to help build temporary docks and repair damaged infrastructure." That's where the 40 wheelbarrows would come from. So, the National Emergency Grant of $5 million will fund over 214 temporary workers to help rebuild the harbor. Each one of those workers will be able to earn $12,000. While the grant provides workers, it does not provide funding for materials. The donation from Walmart will help tremendously providing the materials needed to make the harbor functional again. This quick temporary rebuild is crucial to ensuring a functioning harbor by November when crab season starts. Crab is the main fishery of the Crescent City fleet, when most fishermen make 80% of their annual income. FEMA and other state funds will help with the permanent rebuild of the harbor, estimated to cost over $40 million, but that will take at least two years. Rural Human Services is overseeing the temporary workforce as well as administration of many donations. RHS will ensure this unprecedented donation from Walmart is used for the need as greatest to help restore the harbor and put fishermen back to work. And those numbers are actually the... the monetary distribution of those funds came from Walmart's headquarters. They asked it to be distributed in that way. I might also like to share with you, this is the logo that we'll be using for the NEG crew. They're being called the RHS Tsunami Crew, and our slogan is "Building the Future."
Nice.
So, you'll see this all through town. We've hired the first wave of folks. Tim, how many are on now?
63.
63. They're currently in safety training, I think, over at the city, parts of that to the city. And it's a fantastic project to be able to work on it. It came together with the harbor, the city, the county, and Rural Human Services as the workforce builders to put this together. So, it's pretty exciting, and it's not just for, you know, the harbor. It's any areas in our county that were impacted by the tsunami. We'll be able to work on them, so.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
We will be using this, the donation from Walmart. We are asking other donations to come forward as well. $30,000 is not going to be able to buy the lumber and paint and the cut... pardon me?
Concrete.
Yeah, concrete that we need. So, we are asking other donations to be, you know, come forth and to be put with this to help it go as far as possible. As well, we'll set up an endowment, not an endowment, but a fund much like a getting married and so you're going to register. We're going to register it at Crescent Ace with the type of paint that we'll be using, the type of lumber that we need. That way, if someone wants to go down and buy a can of nails, they can.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
Because then anybody can help.
That's right. It's not, you know, a dollar will buy nails. So, we're hoping that, you know, that we could publicize as many donations that come forward as possible to make it go as far as possible.
And I understand Crescent Ace actually donated $10,000 to the harbor.
Yes, Crescent Ace, they went directly to the harbor. But yes, Barney told us that when we were setting up our account there for this whole process, because we are trying to buy as much of our project materials as possible locally. We'll be using Coast to Coast and Crescent Ace as much as we can. So, yes, he did tell us that he donated $10,000 directly to the harbor, so.
Very cool.
Thanks for that good report, Terry.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council?
No, I just wanted to congratulate RHS on getting that $5 million grant. That was huge. Good job, Tim.
I also would like to salute Frank Winnicky and Ace in the $10,000 donation made for the harbor recovery, and we'll be talking about it later, maybe as soon as the next council meeting, next regular council meeting, but the Reader's Digest, we have a $10,000 award there that we're awaiting word on. And so, the thing that I salute Walmart for, and I was happy to be there for the presentation today, is it shows their local involvement in our community, and it's going to go a long ways in the recovery of the harbor, so a big salute to Walmart also.
Tim, when you're getting done getting all those grants for RHS, do you want to come over and work for the city? Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will move to a public comment period, and any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are not... are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jim Barrett. I live in Anzio Street in Crescent City. I very much wanted to come here and do this tonight, because I know you guys dealt with a monstrous issue last time at your last meeting, and I, for lots of medical reasons, I haven't been able to come to a lot of these meetings, but I did watch it, and I did want to tell you, I've been a harsh critic of yours mostly because of indecisiveness and not listening to us and what have you, but I thought you did a rather good job last time. I thought that you, Mr. Mayor, ran a rather good meeting, and I especially appreciated Mr. Ania coming up with those two magical questions about what happens if we just don't vote at all, and I think that was... I don't know where that came from, but on the videotape, it looks like a brilliant idea, like you saved the day, the cavalry came over the hill, and... but the whole thing really did, considering the extreme tension and pain that was involved in the deal, I thought you did a remarkably good job. It's not the kind of thing I think that's going to go away. You'll probably be facing it again, but for what it's worth from the public that looked on the computer side, I thought you did good. And I would like to remind you that it's not just... I'm not just sucking up to you. I've stood in this very spot and seen the county board of supervisors decide to put public comment all the way to the back end of their meeting, which might mean 12:30, 1 o'clock in the afternoon when you showed up at 10:00. So, I thought it was pretty good. But in that meeting that you had last... two weeks ago, I guess it was your wife. I've never had the pleasure of meeting your wife, but somebody named Mrs. Slert, who looks a lot better than you, got up and spoke, and she was worried about security, and so I wanted to take advantage of that and point out that I'm worried about security, because I live over there on Anzio and Condor, and Condor's kind of a thoroughfare to the beach, and I get a lot of drunks over there that I have to deal with, and I don't bother the police department. I really don't believe I could even get past the dispatcher if I called. Just a couple of days ago, I had an extreme drunk stealing flowers in the neighborhood come to my yard. I physically stopped him. I went... he went across the street, and I physically stopped him. This is a huge problem. I'm not allowed to physically stop people. But on the other hand, when they're drunk and vulgar and disgusting and threatening, you know, you just don't feel like allowing yourself to have your property destroyed. This was in broad daylight, right in the middle of the day. I was... anyways, my point is, security's an issue, money's an issue. The police department cannot, will not, and never has policed the world. It's not possible. A police department can at best maybe, and I'm guessing, but at best, they're going to police 5% of the public. Maybe it's not even that high. We need cooperation from most folks, and they can handle the eight balls, but you're not even going to have enough money for the eight balls here that we have now, let alone those that are going to come along. We need to start thinking progressively about what I can do. I need some direction on how far I can go. I'm more than comfortable and willing to police my lot. I'm more than willing to deal with drunks. When I get off work late at night, and I always seem to work late at night, drunks come to me and ask me to help them better understand the... come to me and ask me to help them better understand the world. They do this by grabbing me. I had a carload of four people, this is not a made up story. Just a few days ago, I'm coming down North Crest, a carload of four people that were drunk, two of them were women, hanging out the window, just yelling gibberish. And I just couldn't understand them. But anyhow, the point is, we've got security issues that we're going to have to be more progressive about.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Hi, Cheryl.
Hello.
Welcome.
I'm Cheryl Corpstein, County Resident. I was actually thinking of holding off on this tonight until someone else from the public approached the subject, so I'm going to read it so I can stay on task. Members of the council, I would like to take a moment to ask you to reexamine in the near future the issue of levying the 2011, 2012 bid assessments. The Crescent City bid was formed in ninety-three and compliance with state law, approved by the California Senate and put in place in our municipal code. The law recognizes that business improvement districts are a good mechanism for small communities to work together to create healthy, prosperous communities, even in times of economic hardship. Bids work can be seen in small communities around the area such as Gridley, Fortuna, Eureka, and Grass Valley. There has been a lot of discussion regarding the appropriateness of this process in our community. Over the last few weeks, this discussion has digressed into negative mire of gossip and finger pointing. All of this distracts from the real need of making healthy, positive choices for all those who live in our community. I would review the facts. No vote on bid or the current bid has taken place. This whole issue was started with an informational, informal, purportedly unbiased survey undertaken by an individual with limited interaction with bid. It simply asked the question, would you like to continue paying a fee? Most of those surveyed had limited or no information on the bid and in their confusion said, no. Who wants to continue paying fees? The council tried to rectify this issue with its own survey. That survey was confusing, the answers were hard to quantify, and people, because of their lack of understanding or confusion and concerns about confidentiality, most people did not actually respond to the survey. The triplicate undertook a third survey. This was a draw, a hundred and four and a hundred and two against, although the results have to be questioned since one of the anti-bid folks actually at this meeting admitted to voting more than once in order to skew the results. The bottom line is that none of these were votes. And while we should look to the input for ways to better serve the community, only this council can vote on the future of this tool. I appreciate that some of those who have opened businesses in the district may be upset that they were unaware of the assessment, but this does not make it illegal or invalid or even uncommon as some business complexes already charge a maintenance fee on top of their rents to tenants. I ask this council to examine their own consciences and do their own homework on the issue of bids. Then make your decision based on what is best decision for the community on a whole. Crescent City is not just the businesses in the bid district, it is the whole community. The decisions this council makes affect us all as we are really the center of all business and government in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Is there other public comment? Chief?
Tim. Tim Hoon, and just addressing the council here, a public comment, because I'm noticing the time and I apologize, I have an eight o'clock appointment. I have to walk the dogs. No, I just, I have an appointment, but so I can't stay and there's an item on the agenda, but since it is public comment, I'll just say, you know, it's been a while since I've been to a city council meeting and it's nice to, you know, be here and I can't believe what a good fortune I have to be here at a meeting when Councilwoman Westfall isn't, you know, I just want to count my blessings. But that's how things work out, you know, and I, you know, I don't want to, so it's just nice, you know, it's a nice evening. No one has signs and, or is yelling and it's great. I mean, that's, that's true, right? And I just, so about this National Emergency Grant that we have, I apologize, I kind of overstated the zero cost there of moving the materials. The cost of moving the materials would be zero, but moving the spoils, but there's other expenses that, that your engineer and planner are well aware of that may be associated with, you know, beachfront.
Shoreline.
Shoreline, thank you, park. So, you know, absolutely. So, I meant to say the cost of moving the materials would be included in the labor. And, but, and I provided Eric with a, there's a short list of general projects that go along with that contract that's on the agenda later, so you can see that. But it's, this is a tremendous thing for the city, county, and harbor to have the, put over two hundred and fifty people to work repairing tsunami damage. And that damage occurred in the city, county, and harbor. And so, whatever we can do to help the city recover from the tsunami damage, these crews are available and trained and supervised and able to do. So, just, Eric has a very knowledgeable, I know how lucky we are to have Eric Weir as Assistant City Engineer, as his title is, but anyway, he's, has the full scope of this project and look forward to doing great things here in the city and repairing tsunami damage and as well as the harbor and county.
Great. Thanks, Tim. Thanks for your leadership and your input. Is there other public comment? Okay.
And just in case you're not here in our next meeting or two, congratulations. Mr. Hoon is getting married in July to the lovely Jody Appel.
If I could just approach, and we're registered at, no, 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 that's, the tsunami project is going to be registered at Ace. Oh, that's right. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Bye.
Okay, we'll close public comment and move on with continuing business, item number ten. And we will consider and/or approve an amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the city of Crescent City and the Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority. Mr. Renfro.
Good evening, Bill Renfro, Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority. This is just an amendment to the current memorandum of understanding to clarify basically who you write the check to. So, the check gets written to the Tri-Agency, but it gets mailed to care of the Delmore EDC, who's now our designated fiscal agent. So, that's the gist of this amendment.
But on some level, it's also about good housekeeping, I think, and bringing it back home?
Yes, it is. It was a recommendation from last year's audit and it is also, as you touched on, many years ago, for other reasons, the fiscal management of Tri-Agency was shifted down to Humboldt County and we've now brought that back up into the county so the revenues stay in the county.
And it also will relate in cost savings.
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, it's going to actually save us a little over four thousand a year by doing this.
Very good. Are there any questions from the council?
No.
Okay. Is there any public comment regarding item number ten? Okay, seeing no public comment?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion of second. And Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shalon?
Yes.
Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
Yes, thank you. So, that's unanimous at four to nothing? Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item number twelve, and that's, actually, I'm sorry, eleven, new business. And that's consider, consider and approve a Tri-Agency budget revision. Again, Mr. Renfro.
Thank you. And I, this is, I deserve, you deserve an apology for this, but basically, when we were doing our budget, we had used a template from a previous year and there were some artifact formulas in there that basically made the number that appeared in the county, or in the city's budget line item sixteen dollars and sixty-four cents short. So, what we're actually asking for is one thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-four cents versus what you saw before, which was fifteen twenty-four. So, it's a sixteen dollar and sixty-four percent correction, sorry. That's it.
Thank you. It might have been cheaper just to ask somebody to write you a check.
I do have a question, Bill. On, you have, for the county and the harbor, you have it as an amended increase, but it looks like it's less money on the harbor, I mean, on the county.
The, yes, what happened was the harbor's computation was even further off and when I did the adjustment, theirs actually came down. So, their intended increase was five hundred and, sorry, it was two hundred and fifty-six dollars and they were basically overbilled.
But the county, it looks like it's a decrease instead of an increase?
No, the county is also a slight increase. Theirs went up two hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-five cents because of the same error.
Wait, it says you have budgeted seventy-one thousand, eight hundred, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and ten eleven? And then on this new fiscal year, it'd be sixty thousand?
I, it's, if you look over at the actual, the column that says anticipated budget, the county's contribution was actually fifty-seven thousand, five hundred. The additional funds that you see there were from CDBG monies and they weren't really, I mean, they came through the county, but they weren't.
CDBG.
So, really, the county's contribution last year was fifty-seven thousand, five hundred, and that's going up to sixty thousand, five hundred, fifty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions?
I'd just point out that the thirty-one thousand, five hundred is in the budget that we just approved. So, if we do not want to give him the fifteen hundred dollars, that will come out of our budget. So, we'll be fifteen hundred dollars in the, more in the black.
Right, and I mentioned that during the budget discussions.
Other questions or clarifications? Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll get back to the council.
I'll make a motion to approve the Tri-Agency budget.
Well, I think it's already, I mean, we've already approved it by approving the budget now that I went back and looked at it. So, what we would be doing is, if we were going to take action, we would be removing it from the budget, I believe.
Yeah, right now, I have thirty-one thousand, five hundred, so technically, I'm missing forty-one dollars and forty-four cents.
Yeah, so.
But I don't need action for that.
Could I ask Mr. Renfro, does the, do the member agencies of Tri-Agency have to approve the Tri-Agency budget?
Yes, this budget is actually created by Tri-Agency, which has two representatives in the city council on the board.
Right.
And so, this was created there and I'm now going to each of the three contributing agencies to ask for their contributions for the Tri-Agency approved budget.
Have the county and the harbor approved it?
No, they have not. They're, it's on tomorrow night's harbor and it'll be on next Tuesday's county agenda.
Then I'd like to withdraw my motion.
I just want to, I want to make sure I understand because the Solid Waste Management Authority comes before the city council and presents its budget, but it doesn't require the council to act in favor of the budget or approve the budget. Is Tri-Agency different than that or is tonight's more in the nature of a report?
Well, Bob, the Solid Waste Authority, the city doesn't give any money to the solid waste. We actually give thirty thousand dollars to Tri-Agency. He's asking for us to give thirty-one thousand, five hundred, whatever. So, that's why he's here tonight.
Yeah, but it's on the agenda as approve the Tri-Agency budget.
Revision.
Revision.
Right.
Right, so basically, we're actually asking.
It's a budget, it would be a budget, if we wouldn't have just approved it in our budget, it would have been a revision to our budget. So, I think that that's where the confusion was.
But isn't there still a sixteen dollar and sixty-four cent bust? Forty-one?
What I, what I would do is, if everybody's comfortable, make a motion approving their budget and then supporting the contribution to it and the forty-one dollars and forty-four cents, I don't specifically have marked in the budget, that'll, that'll kind of cover that.
I don't even think we need to take action. We already did by approving it in the budget. If this council doesn't want the fifteen hundred dollars extra, then we would need to take, make a motion to remove it from that line item, out of the budget.
So, then this is more an advisory thing and I can work with Mr. McDonald to get these.
Yeah, because if, according to me, the budget that we passed on July one, we'll give them the first quarter contribution of that amount because I think that's the way we've been doing it.
Okay.
Unless somebody on this council feels strongly enough to have the fifteen hundred removed, that's the action we would need, I think.
That's the most important action from my perspective, too, because as Kelly said, we have got it technically approved in the budget, but whether we need to take any formal action or if there's any reversal to that action, that we definitely need to have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, there will not be an approval. It's already been approved. So, continuing on in new business, item number twelve A is to consider request from Global Premier Development, Inc. to support the home program application for funding. Mr. Taylor.
Recently, we were, the city was approached by a developer known as Global Premier Development to construct a sixty-three unit affordable housing complex located on a property between North Crest and Hoover, kind of around the corner there near North Valley Bank. And what they're asking the city to do is to support their project by submitting an application from, through HCD, through the home program funding. And I put in the report, they're asking for three million dollars, but actually, they came back to me today and asked if we could up that to six million dollars, actually.
Sure, not a problem.
Well, that was more, be more competitive. I mean, it's a cost, it's kind of a point-based system. So, basically, to get the, the second half of that is to get the tax income credits. So, in order to get that, they have to show that they have funding already. So, if they can secure the funding through the home program, then that makes our application look stronger for getting the tax credits. So, basically, what they're asking for the city is for their support and, you know, we would be the applicants for that home program funding. And to that end, we would be responsible for submitting the application and we'd also be responsible for reporting on the complex for about fifty-five years. Basically, you submit annual reports to HCD regarding the condition of the property and if it's being maintained properly and up kept. Just to get a little background, Global Premier Development did come to the city back in two thousand and seven and asked, originally asked for this project. Back then, it was approved, the first time around, they had asked for some RDA funds and they were also going after the tax credits and the home program. They were denied both the tax credits and the home program applications, that's why they kind of went away. So, they come back again now and another effort to make this happen. And originally, in the original documents, if you have the old planning commission report, one of the justifications was that they're trying to get attainment of housing element. Housing element outlines how many affordable housing units from very low all the way up to moderate housing. Our current housing element has outlined that we need about approximately a hundred and thirty, low to very low income, you know, housing units. The property that they're looking at right now is Zone C2, which is a general commercial district. Originally, when our general plan came out, it didn't identify housing-only project, residential-only projects as part of the general plan objectives. It did outline saying specifically that you could have a mixed-use development where you'd have both commercial and residential development. I believe it was in two thousand and six, the city amended the zoning code and amended the general plan to allow by use permit residential-only projects. So, that's where we're at right now. They're asking the city to support their project, to apply for the application and part of that would be signing the resolution as a task to report.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions by the council?
I don't have any questions. I'm, I don't have much confidence in this company. Anybody that wants to ask us to apply for six million dollars and be the applicant and follow up on the whole program for fifty-five years and doesn't come before the council, I have a problem with. Number two, I hate to see us lose that commercial lot off the tax rolls. And number three, when they, the reason this is back here again tonight is because when they sent us the agreement two weeks ago, they sent us an agreement and called us the city of Brawley. So on top of all of that, the fact that they were denied the tax credits and the application, I don't think they have their ducks in a row, and I'm just not comfortable with it.
Thank you. Other questions, clarifications?
I feel the same way.
Thank you.
I like the concept, and especially the part where they had a social services component, which our families in this income bracket benefit from greatly, but I do agree with the comments from Councilmember Shalong.
I would also concur, and for me, the notion of a significant housing project, basically on North Crest, just doesn't seem like a good fit to me. It seems to me, commercial, which is what it's Zone C2, would be much more compatible. The notion of families and kids playing and running around and hanging out just doesn't seem to fit, so. And I'm also perplexed that the applicant didn't want to come up here and present it to us, so it seems like it's probably not their top priority. Is there public comment?
Seeing no public comment, back to the council.
I guess I would make a motion to deny the request for the city to be the applicant.
Do we need to do that? Is that, I mean, can, we've never done that, so can we do that?
Sure, you can do that.
Okay, second.
Mr. Black, which hat did you have on when you said that?
All of them and three or four others.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
And that's a yes, thank you. So it's four to nothing.
And I'd like to just also make a comment that I think that we could use any funding that the city could come across or budget for low-income housing to upgrade, to help our low-income housing people that live here right now to upgrade their homes. And I also think that this council probably needs some kind of a workshop, an update on our, the understanding of our low-income housing numbers, the hundred and thirty. It seems to me like we shouldn't be that far away. And we were, I know we were discussing whether or not the fact that we provide HUD to, I think it's like eight hundred homes, whether or not any of that qualifies. We just haven't talked about it for a while, so maybe we could put that on a future agenda.
I think it's a very good recommendation. For me, I'd much rather see the investment going into existing people's homes that are struggling to help improve and upgrade our neighborhoods and community. And it's also, when you keep it in perspective, sometimes I think these particular government programs are overly optimistic in their objectives. They're talking about something like another hundred and thirty low-mod housing units by 2014, and based on the economy and the lack of development, if we have one or two building permits a year, it's out of sync with the reality of the economy in our community. So I think we should revisit. Okay, so, so item twelve B disappears because of the action on twelve A. So we'll move to item, business item, new business, item number thirteen, authorize an agreement with Real Human Services for the temporary labor to be funded by the National Emergency Grant.
Mayor, I have an attachment to the proposed agreement that consists of a list of projects.
Very good.
I'd just like to say, I am extremely grateful and happy for our community with, you know, the entire process. I mean, if you think about it, we just had this major disaster just, just a couple months ago, and we are on the road to recovery with, you know, we're, we're looking at getting, you know, close to over ninety percent of the funding of all the repairs paid for, and then for us to get a five million dollar grant to put people to work, that's just, I think that's unheard of. And I feel extremely humbled that our community is, is receiving this assistance, and I'm so happy that we're going to be able to put local people to work. And so I really just, I'm sorry Tim and Terry had to leave, but extremely grateful to them for putting this together, and I know that it's going to take the cooperation of our city staff, and I know that it's going to benefit everybody, so I'm just, I'm just ready to approve this.
Could I request that you approve it subject to approval of the city attorney's office? There are a couple of things in here that make it rather confusing as to who's actually employing the individuals, and I think they're simple to sort out, but they need a few minor changes.
Sure.
Very good. Are there other questions, clarifications on the council? Okay, is there public comment? Mr. Barrett?
Sorry to, I'm sorry to make this comment, but sitting back there, Tim Hume is obviously an asset to this community. Writes apparently extremely well, might be a pure genius, but he has a character flaw, and it's completely inappropriate for him to stand up here before you to make a snide and insulting comment about one of your own members who happens to be hurt. And I want to thank you specifically for not laughing or promoting that notion. I wish you would have come down on it a bit, but you ought to be embarrassed to have people talk to you that way about one of your own, and you looked embarrassed, and I thank you for it. And there's absolutely no way that it makes sense to just insult people when they're not even here in a public forum on TV, and the man's a genius, I know in some ways, but if you really are his friend, maybe you should give him a tip that he's got to work on that weakness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Is there a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council.
I move to approve and authorize the agreement with RHS for temporary labor to be funded by a national emergency grant dependent on review by council.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
I'll abstain. I sit on the RHS board.
Okay. Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
Yes, thank you. So it's three to one with one abstention, so it passes unanimously? Thank you very much. Okay, so item number fourteen, we'll consider and/or approve a resolution entitled Resolution Number 2011 dash twenty-eight A, a resolution of the city, council of the City of Crescent City approving the application for statewide park program grant funds.
I said, sure, I'll remember, we went through this once before for the Proposition eighty-four grant funding. Basically, what it is, there's up to five million dollars through state parks right now to create new parks.
Because they can't manage what they have now, right?
Well, yeah, this is a bond act that's passed in 2006.
I know.
Now available. Originally, what we're looking back at for the proposed project is the property located behind Safeway and Ray's, kind of ended Fifth Street there, known as the old Macamara Peep mill site, and some adjoining properties, total about eleven acres in size. Originally, we brought this forward, we also went to the county, and they signed a joint resolution. We're asking them to do that again. They'll be taking that to their, I think, June twenty-eighth meetings, when their next meeting is. During the first round, there was a hundred and ninety-four million dollars in funding available. Like I said, we applied, they, after the announcements were made, they said they basically had received five hundred applications and about a billion dollars worth of requests for funding. It was a highly competitive grant. What hurt us the first time around, we, I mean, we have a pretty strong application, because the application is basically, it's based on poverty, that, you know, the need for parks, the health of the community. One thing that hurt us the first round was they have a fact finder report that basically puts a half-mile radius around your project area, and it gives you all the statistics, like how many people are at the income level. But one of the things it asked for, it gives you is the park acreage per resident. And so what happened the first time around, if you look on their, their little fact finder report, it shows all that fishing game land back there is parkland, which is inaccessible.
It's not.
Right, and I, I petitioned that the first time around, and they said, no, we're not going to change it. So, and then even after the announcements were made, you're in that meeting also, where he came straight out and said that hurt our project. Like I said, it's all points, so higher you score, the better your application looks. I received the call from, from them early, early June, late May, and they said that actually they are going to remove, they said they received further information from state, I mean, from fishing game, and they're going to remove that property off of there. So now when you put the report on there, it shows zero park acreage per residence, so that obviously is going to enhance our application. So we are going to go ahead and resubmit for round two, there's another hundred and ninety-four million dollars available. Another big part of this grant application, as remember, the first time around, is getting the community's input on what they'd like to see in the, in the new park. So we've kind of reached out more this time around, just having public meetings. We've been going to, we went to the health fair, doing the farmer's market, have stuff at the swimming pool, getting people to get there, we've gone to the senior center, so we're making a greater effort to get the community outreach here, so.
Good. You know, I don't know if this would be appropriate or not, but what about having the, the Wald Rivers Health?
Building healthy communities.
Building healthy communities, thank you.
I was thinking the same thing as well.
Yeah, writing a letter of support.
They don't, that'd be great, but they don't care about letters of support for this application. They don't really recognize that. So basically, like I said, it's all based on points. So what they ask for really is the resolution approving the submittal, and so we're back again, because, you know, they say council members can change, they want to make sure you're still in support of this project, so they ask for it again. But they do like the cooperation agreement, that if the, you know, the county, city and county together wanting this project, does, it looks better for us.
I, I was thinking the exact same thing, if we did need letters of support, because they really are into fitness as one of their goals. I wanted to especially thank Eric and Bridget for doing the outreach. They were at the farmer's market Saturday morning on their day off supposedly, and working to get public input, so I wanted to especially thank you two for doing all of that.
Yeah, I give an extra thanks to the roller derby girls, they've helped get bored out here and stuff.
Bridget, the roller derby queen, that's so hard for me to, I got to go watch.
Any other questions?
No.
Clarifications?
I'll make a motion that we.
Actually, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Eric, the two point nine million dollars that we're proposing to go for?
Well, let me clarify. Some of the information, feedback I got from parks, state parks, one was the community outreach, they want to see a broader effort on our part, and the other thing was that the average project, the average funding amount for the first round was two point nine million. Not saying that they won't fund up to five million, they're just saying that was the average, so that's where that number comes from.
And then, you know, the site was deemed as a contaminated site, and then they had the phase one work done on it, and then a report subsequently, and then a phase two report.
Right, there was the phase one that identified, they call them hotspots in the cleanup effort. Phase two, this was all done during the bankruptcy proceedings, there was some money left in there for cleanup funds. Of course, they went through all that money, so they didn't complete all of the cleanup, but a lot of the, like I said, the hotspots, the underground tanks, and a lot of the really, you know, concentrated areas have been cleaned up.
Was part of the solution for the cleanup to actually cap the site?
Yeah, in the, the RAP, which is a remediation action plan, that was presented by the bioforensics, they're the consultants for that project, and that was my understanding by reading the report, and I believe it was the understanding shared by other staff. We've been getting kind of some conflicting reports from regional water quality staff right now, so I've gone back to the, the project manager on that project, and he's looking at it again for us, and going to work up, try and work up a cost estimate to do the rest of the cleanup for us. It was a battle just getting the original reports and stuff. I've asked for regional water quality, and they wouldn't give them to us for some reason, I'm not sure why, but I went, actually went back to that firm, and they brought them back from like Indiana or somewhere, we had, they mailed them to us.
So my interest would be that I hope that it doesn't take the lion's share of whatever grant monies we might obtain to clean up the site.
Right, that's why we're getting a handle on that now, we'll hopefully work that out. Hopefully, it's going to be less, because we kind of padded a little the first time around, so hopefully we'll be able to divert some of that funding for other amenities in the park.
Very good.
Did you make a public records request of regional water?
No, just conversation with their staff.
Well, if you have a problem, again, do that.
Did you make a motion? I started to, but.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2011 twenty-eight for the joint resolution of the city council of the City of Crescent City, California, and the Delnarque County Board of Supervisors approving the application for statewide, statewide park program grant funds.
Second.
Second.
So I have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
Yes, thank you. So that's also unanimous at four to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we will look at legislative matters. Mr. Black?
I have nothing to bring before you. I think all of you are in the loop as far as the governor vetoing the budget, status of redevelopment agencies, which is not really looking good, and, you know, just the continuing drama in Sacramento.
And also, I guess, the redistricting, which is moving into its final phase, I think, by the end of this week?
I don't have up to date on that.
I just read, I read today that they're having another public meeting, and the closest one to us is San Francisco or Sacramento. And there is like ten meetings, and they're all from there south, down to like Oxnard, Whittier, Fresno. I mean, it's just not fair at all, absolutely not fair. I mean, I was curious if we were going to weigh in on this at all.
That actually was where I was going, I was wondering if there was an interest on the part of the council to offer a letter of support or non-support regarding the redistricting.
You know, I don't, I don't think a political body can send a letter, they're not, they're not going to consider it.
Is that true?
Can't be a political body.
Why?
That's what I've, that's what I've been told, because it's supposed to, that committee's nonpartisan.
You can double-check on that, Bob, but I'm pretty sure that's correct.
I, I think the, the thrust of the committee was to remove politics from the districting decision, but I don't think that that is a disability for the city council weighing in and sending a letter.
Okay.
I happened to hear basically this identical discussion by the Arcata City Council, and I know they were going to weigh in.
They were going to.
Because I, I believe we'll lose Senator Lamafa and Congressman Thompson.
Yep, that's correct.
Through the process.
It's a possibility. Definitely Lamafa. It was a possibility. Definitely Lamafa, but not necessarily for sure. We don't know quite yet about Congressman Thompson.
But I guess the point that's worth making is they have been strong supporters of our area, Del Norte County and Crescent City, over the years, and in particular since the tsunami event. So, it'd be unfortunate to use, to lose that support.
Well, I definitely, I will say this. I don't think that you should personalize it to individual representatives, because that's not what they're doing. They're creating districts, and whoever, you know, districts may seesaw back and forth, people may retire, die in office, whatever. It's more about what's our community of interest.
Coastal community, yeah.
And that's, that's the most obvious. We have received representation from people across the mountains that have sought to be very effective for us and sought to understand our problems. But the concept of community of interest and just accessibility, the fact that, let's be honest about it, it's not easy to get to Redding, to the nearest district office. Of course, now we have one in Crescent City by Senator Lamafa, which is unique in recent history.
Yeah. And I think he's visited us more times in the last
Three years.
Year or two than any other representative has.
I think what I'm saying is, I think your voice would be more effective if it was couched in terms of a community of interest. You know, you should all be part of one district because...
I think that's fair enough. I mean, my understanding is, what's proposed currently is that we're basically Del Norte County with a flag over to Siskiyou. And so, it's a somewhat different kind of representation.
Right.
And certainly not exclusively coastal, which I think there are unique conditions here.
Yeah.
Relative to inland.
You're right. There is a portion of Siskiyou County. It's split in the new proposal, but in, which seems very peculiar. But I think they are doing that by...
Going back to the old Klamath County.
By population.
We used to be in the same county as Happy Camp.
Yep. Yep, that's what they tried to do.
Interesting.
So, is there a directive to offer a...
Sure.
It depends on what it is, because I'm for keeping Del Norte in the coastal communities.
Same.
I agree.
I don't, I don't know enough about the map to, I, yeah.
I think it would be, it would be very easy to write a letter arguing to keep Del Norte in with the coastal communities. It's more difficult if you want to split the baby and say, well, you know, some districts should go across the mountain, some should be coastal.
Very good.
So, I'm...
So, directed. Okay. Reports from my colleagues. Mr. Ania?
See, I attended the Front Street Design Meeting. I think that was just two weeks ago. And it was, it was pretty well attended. There was about 30 people there. And Mr. Weir and Mr. Taylor did an excellent job on showing the diagrams and showing the people. It was interesting, although we're a community, I don't know if I counted more than three people there, including myself, as being city residents. So, it wasn't, there wasn't very many city residents. They were county residents. But it was very interesting, and they had some, they had some good input. So, it's looking really, it's looking really nice. And I, last week, I went to Sacramento to my Public Safety Committee. And once again, I had time to stop at the Capitol. It was interesting. That was the Wednesday when they had to vote before midnight or their pay would stop. So, going to our Assemblyman's Office and our State Senator's Office in the Capitol was very difficult to do, because the hallway was crowded with lobbyists and other people, and you had to walk around it. I've never seen that many people at the state Capitol. Of course, the last time I was there, I was in fourth grade. So, it wasn't, I don't remember that too well. But anyway, I did that. And then, the Public Safety Committee met Thursday, and we talked about current bills and procedures that is affecting public safety. And there are, there were some bills that, that we, we definitely oppose. And so, we made our feelings known for, for that. There were 60 people in that committee meeting. And we were also briefed about the budget, the budget bills and things like that. But it was very, it's very interesting. And I don't have anything to report from the public safety as far as brand new, brand new bills coming out, because there hasn't, there hasn't been any that have gone to the floor of the legislature yet. One, one bill that we're watching is the, it's always by a state senator or an assemblyman from San Francisco. But Senator Amiano from San Francisco wants to introduce, introduced a bill, in fact, that we opposed, to the five-year test case of growing hemp commercially. And, and it could, five test counties, and they haven't picked the counties. And growing hemp is a form of marijuana that has a lower dose of THC in it. And that bill we opposed, and because it'd have to be monitored by the police, and any disputes would have to be taken up by the police, and there's no money in there to enforce that. And it doesn't say that it has to be on land. It can be cultivated in someone's backyard. And so, that, that, we voted that down, and so, we'll see what happens as it moves on. But it's very interesting in Sacramento.
Very good. Thank you, Rich. Ms. Murray?
I have to say, I do like hemp clothing, though. It's a natural fabric, and it's very nice. I, as you know, missed our last council meeting, and I apologize. I was ill. I did attend our Del Norte Solid Waste Authority meeting, where we adopted our new fiscal budget, and the senior center board meeting, where we're working on those same issues and continuing to restructure. And Charlene Maisy is the interim director, and she's doing a terrific job for us. And just want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July, because we won't meet again until after. So, happy and safe Fourth of July, everybody.
Very good. Ms. Shalone?
Also attended Solid Waste Management Authority meeting, and also ad hoc committee meetings. Had one last week, another one today at lunch to go over the rollout of the cart system. And there are some challenges, but overall, it's going pretty well. I think everything will be ready to roll on time. So, that's a good thing.
I already had mine picked up. I'm impressed that they're ahead of schedule.
Yeah, yeah. And then, I wanted to offer a couple of ideas for future agenda discussions and talking with a lot of people lately. I think it would behoove us to sit down and take a look at opportunities to come up with some creative ways to help developers start their projects here in Del Norte County when it comes to sewer. I don't know what that looks like, but I understand other communities are doing it. And one of the ideas that I throw out is possibly considering like a 50% down payment on their sewer connection. And then, you know, the other 50% when they sell the home with, you know, obviously some restrictions and time lengths. I think Bob had some ideas on other ways to finance sewer hookups. And the reason I bring this up is because I've just been hearing a lot from real estate and developers lately, that they're just, they just can't move forward with their projects right now because of the costs. So, I would rather see us come up with a feasible way to help them move forward than to have it stop altogether. The other thing I'd like for us to talk about is our water and our water bills, and how we are classifying. As one example, restaurants. We've been, I think, more than myself hearing complaints from local restaurants about the cost of their water bills, excuse me, and being classified as heavy industrial, heavy industrial, or heavy commercial. And what, what that means, maybe look at other opportu, I mean, I don't know, but if there's a way to reclassify them and/or look at ways for restaurants to reduce their grease, or, you know, new and improved grease traps, you know, new green technology, but something that will help them lower their water costs. Because some of them are looking at closing the restaurants because of those costs, and I don't want to see that happen. So, two items that I would like to see our staff discuss and bring, bring it to a workshop for the council, or bring us some ideas to consider. And California won Miss USA last night. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Shalone. I also concur with your two recommendations for future agenda items, because I've been approached by several people. And because of the tough economic times, it's just making it all the more problematic and challenging to survive. So, it's very timely. Of note, the grand jury report is out, and our city, as I understood, had no issues. So, a salute to the city, everybody from the top to the bottom. I think that speaks volumes, considering. So, that's one piece of information. I attended the RCTA meeting last week, I believe it was. I attended and saw a couple of my colleagues there, the annual firemen's awards dinner, which was hugely successful. And I saluted in behalf of the council and our staff, our firefighters. They actually had a combined banquet and awards dinner this year with both fire departments. And it was, I think, well-received and hugely successful. So...
I was so bummed not be able to go. I had to work.
Yeah. And then, I attended Elk Valley Rancheria Utilities Ad Hoc Committee last week, and then the Front Street Public Workshop for Design Review, which Rich gave a good report on. Also attended with some of my colleagues, the Walmart Harbor Recovery Check Donation Presentation last week. And then, I've met with several individuals and groups regarding bid issues ongoing. And then, I reviewed the new harbor facilities designs as proposed. So, that's a review of what I've done the past two weeks.
Before we close, I'd like to say welcome back to Jack Grease, who is in our audience tonight.
Welcome, Jack.
It's refreshing to, to see this kind of a meeting, because where I come from, 90% of the people down here are...
You must live near Bell.
Want to move back?
Welcome back. Welcome back, Jack. Okay, so, actually, we do have a proposed special council meeting for Wednesday, June 29th. Correct. At 6:30 PM here at the Flynn Center. And there'll be a series of, of RDA and other issues at that meeting.
Bob, could you send an email out to us, or, Bob Janine, what should we call you?
Janine won't be back till Monday, so...
Okay.
Probably be me.
I just didn't bring my calendar, so I don't want to forget.
On the 29th meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll do that. I'll make sure it gets out. Probably Laura.
Great.
Very good.
I'm not going to, yeah, I was going to do an agenda, agenda cover page.
I mean, just something I can put in my calendar.
I think they mean for tomorrow. Get it out.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. We'll adjourn, adjourn the meeting at this time.